I see that it says we're being livestreamed. Anything else we need to do, Dawn?
It is done. I'll double check that it's streaming, but you can start now.
Okay, great. Today is Monday, July 14th, 2025. I'd like to call to order an organizational meeting for the Saratoga Springs Public Library Board of Trustees. The first item on our agenda is the election of the officers. Would someone like to nominate a candidate for president?
I would like to nominate Heather Crocker.
Would someone like to second that nomination? I didn't see who that was. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Would someone like to nominate candidate for vice president?
I would like to nominate Carol Dives.
Would someone like to second that motion? Thank you, Jean. All in favor? Thank you. And would someone like to make a motion to nominate a candidate for secretary of the board?
I nominate Terry DeGruy, Secretary.
Thanks, Frank. Someone like to not, Heather, did you just not, did you just second that motion?
Yes.
Okay, what, all in favor? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the committee assignments. We have three committees going into the next fiscal year. The first is the Personnel Committee. The second is the Strategic Planning Committee, and the third is the Branch Expansion Committee that will continue its, its work. It is useful to have two, two or more board members that can serve on a committee. There is no expectation that you serve on more than one. Is there anyone who would like to be on the Personnel Committee next year?
I might swing through this.
Okay, Frank. And would someone like to serve with Frank?
I can do it, but I I'm not sure how active the Library Expansion Committee will be.
Okay. And that was when you were, you were on that with me, right? Yeah, so it would make sense if you stayed on. So can someone else who either has served on Personnel before or hasn't join Frank for next year?
I'm willing to work with Frank.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Terry. And next is the Strategic Planning Committee. As you know, we have the, the strategic plan itself will be, is on our agenda for this evening. But it may be helpful to continue some of the conversations around what that work looks like going into the year, so that is not something that's expected to meet very frequently. Jen, do you know how often that a committee around the strategic plan has met in the past?
Not.
No, okay. So would, is any, would anyone volunteer to be on that Strategic Planning Committee?
I was interested in being on the committee, but maybe me.
So that's a possible, that's a possible, Jean?
Yeah, I mean, I'll stay on the committee.
Okay, that's great. Anyone else? I will leave you there for now, Jean. And then the final is the Branch Expansion. I, I would like to stay on that committee. Nancy, you were interested in staying on it as well? Okay, is anyone else interested in joining us, or are you all good? You're gonna, you're gonna what?
I'm interested in joining the Branch Expansion Committee.
Okay. Are you okay being on both, Jean? Or do you want, do we want somebody else to volunteer to be on the Strategic Planning Committee?
Well, we'll see if I get worn out by all the activity.
Well, I can volunteer to do the Strategic Planning Committee with Jean, and that way if she ends up needing to spend more time with the Branch Expansion or someone else.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Heather, and actually, that would make sense because there were some, a few of those things on the strategic plan that were board-related. That might be, so it'd be nice to have two people in case one can't make it. Okay, and then you will see that Ike has attached the Annual Trustee Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy at a station and statement. If you could do that while you're there, that's helpful. Ike, I will plan on sending mine in. And the next item on the, this part of the agenda is the meeting and holiday schedule. Are there any particular changes based on what they've been like in the past, Ike, that you want to draw our attention to?
Yeah, I think we might want to have a discussion. So there's, so there's two things. One, you'll notice that we, Belmont is coming back again next year, so we're anticipating they'll probably do the same thing next year as they did this year, and shut down Broadway or the Wednesday before to all of that. So we've added that as a nine to five day. The biggest maybe thing to discuss is that we, when we can, we, we've we've strained a little bit the last couple of years. We tried to have our budget vote and trustee election on the Thursday of National Library Week. This year, we didn't because of the way the school break fell and the Easter and Passover holidays, so we pushed it back. Next year, for a reason that I can't discern, the, the National Library Week is the same week next year as it was this year, but there's no conflict with, and it's moved because of the conflict with the holidays. But there is no conflict. So Passover is done. By then, school breaks are over by that week. So we could have our meeting, it's regular, second Monday, if, if we didn't mind not having it during National Library Week, or we can push it back.
So as I look at this, the difference is just that we go from our March meeting is March 9th, and then April, this would have us meeting on the 20th, which is then only a couple of weeks. What is the date? Would it have just been? Would it have been the 13th?
With the, with the, with the budget vote then, on the 15th?
I see. Does anybody have a, have any opinion about this?
So are we, are we recommending, Ike, are you recommending that we keep the tw, the dates, the 20th and the 23rd? Or are we looking at change?
I'm not making any recommendation. I just wanted you to know that, that we have changed in the past and have strayed away from having a meeting during National Library Week, but it's conflicted with school breaks and holidays. This year, it doesn't again this year, but it's later than it usually is for some reason.
National Library Week.
So it just means that we go a lot longer between our meetings, but from March to April, and then have a much quicker turnaround to our May meeting. That's really the only difference.
Is that an issue for the staff?
It will be two weeks later that we have another meeting.
Yeah, it's just, it looks like the meeting is just one week later, that it would have been on the 13th, and this, and this is proposing it to be on the 20th instead.
And this schedule that is, is exactly what we did this year. We pushed it back to the 3rd.
Right.
Do you think they're gonna change it permanently, or do you think it's gonna go back to being a conflicting date?
I have no idea, and I can't understand the rationale for, I mean, there must be a reason why they pushed it back this year, but I can't, can't figure it out because there's, there's no conflict with that, which is, I was making assumption in the past that that's why they, you know, for, for a long time, it was always the second week of, of April, and then they started changing it to not conflict with holidays.
Right, and the, and the holidays are what are, what are changing. And are, are, by the way, are we always closed on Easter?
We are, yes. It's not a paid holiday, but we do close.
Okay. I, I, I'm fine with this, with this, this schedule and realigning it back to being Library Week. Is anybody else, does anyone have an opinion about it on the board?
I mean, I guess I feel like we should follow our regular pattern unless there's a, a reason. And it feels like this may be an aberration, but it may be permanent. I mean, I think I would rather go back to our regular schedule, and then if they start being in conflict and changing it, then having it, then we'll be here.
Okay, so that, that would imply, that would mean that the meeting and the budget hearing would both happen on Monday, the 13th, and the election would happen on the 16th. Is that correct?
Is that what you're suggesting, Jean? Go back to our pattern of our regular second Monday, or to our pattern of having it during National Library?
I thought we should go back to our pattern of having it our second Monday.
The second Monday, okay.
It's just, if that's our pattern.
Yeah. We've done, I mean, we've, we've clearly done both and tried to move it around. We've also had that our patter, our library time fell on one of those holidays or that vacation week, but if it doesn't, does anybody else have feelings about that, of which way we go?
Jen, Jen, do you, do you say this like a better sound beyond 13?
Oh, I don't know. I was just making a statement that two weeks later, we will be meeting again. I gotta mean it all the time.
But I just, I, I like the idea, I mean, I don't know that we've ever done a lot of PR around it. I mean, I'm fine with either way, but I do like the idea of it being the budget vote, and especially in this climate, which I'm assuming is not gonna be any different next year, being tied to National Library Week and that we do some, you know.
We could also, we could also do our regular meeting and the budget hearing on the 13th, which would be our regular time, and the vote happens the following week. I mean, there's no reason that one, they have to happen on the Monday and Thursday of the same thing, so the vote.
There is a reason, because the, the vote has to happen within a certain number of days of the public hearing.
Of the budget hearing, okay. So are you basically asking me to try to make it, make the call here? Is that what, is that, is that what we're? What, where, which way we're going?
I mean, my, my preference, I mean, I, I know it makes a funny schedule, and we're, when there's so long between meetings and then so short between the next one, but the tradition that I like of having it during National Library and having, and having the budget vote seen celebratory rather than.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what we have been trying to generally align with, so, so why don't we do that? I make a motion, and then wait, before I make a motion, is there anything else on here?
Just one thing I noticed, I think the Belmont closure day just needs two stars next to it because it's not extra paid during the day.
Okay, that's right.
Yep. Well, and what is Juneteenth? Is that?
Juneteenth is midweek.
Right, but Juneteenth is?
It's a, it's a paid holiday. Some people would work.
Yeah, so it's, so you're saying, you're implying, Jamie, that because it's, because we changed the hours, but it's not a paid holiday, that's why we need to put the stars, right? Okay.
Oh, it's on a Friday.
Right, okay. All right, then, I would like to make a motion to accept this calendar with the change of adding those stars for Belmont on Broadway. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second, Terry.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Thanks. Okay. Do I need to adjourn, Ike, to then go into our regular meeting, or can I just go into our regular meeting?
Maybe Heather takes over.
I'll just adjourn, just in case. I'm adjourning our organizational meeting, and I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Saratoga Springs Public Library on Monday, July 14th, 2025. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the June meeting minutes. Does anyone have anything they need to discuss or that they noticed on the minutes, and if not, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
There was, there was something that you and I and Tanya had an email exchange about that you, you had asked for a correction, which I don't think made it into the packet version.
Okay.
It's under 9A, the strategic planning, rather than saying that you would revise, or that you would prepare a draft of the director's statement, it should say Ike will, will prepare an initial draft and Katie will review.
Yes, that's what I wanted it changed to. So can we, can we accept, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes with that change?
So moved, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. And second? Okay, thank you. All in favor? So, Tanya, I believe that Terry sent that, that draft, I mean, no, that, that correction to you today, or did it just go to me, Terry?
No, I sent it to both of you. Actually, I sent it to.
Okay, great, so we can get that. Okay, that's great, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of expenditures. There are some requests to reallocate. This is our last meeting of our fiscal year, so this is just taking care of little details of things that may have had some variations in, in income or expenses. I'm going to give this list, $10,000 from 60015-1 Books to 60018-1 Electronic Resources. $4,000, I'm just gonna say what they are without the numbers. $4,000 from equipment to repairs and maintenance. $6,005, that should be 500. It looks like mine has an extra zero. So if we could have that corrected, $6,500 from equipment to library supplies. $6,000 from professional services to electric. $400 from professional services to water and sewer tax. Are all those clear to people, or do you need me to read them again? I know they were a last-minute addition. No questions? Okay. The next on the list of expenditures are the June prepaid checks, 73534 to 73537 totaling $3,427.2. The July warrant checks, 73717 to 73829 totaling $248,567.74. And supplemental warrant checks, 73830 to 73832 totaling $14,687.78. Would someone, does anyone have any questions about any of those expenditures, and if not, would someone like to make a motion to approve them?
I'd love to make a motion to approve them.
Thanks, Jean. And the second of that motion? Thanks, Nancy. All in favor? Thank you. The approval of the financial reports, the June prepaid, the July warrant summary sheet, and the supplemental warrant sheet, the budget report, and the income report. I had a question. Let me get down to it. On the income report. I think that Ike, you can probably tell me this, because I think I'm just not reading something correctly. We have at the bottom the year-to-date total, and then below that, we have the full year estimate. Under reserve is the $971,095, something we thought we may need to use, but in fact, we didn't need to use it?
That's exactly what it is. Right, we, we, and it's because of just the way that the elevator project is falling and the capital projects, we thought we would need to dip farther into the reserve.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. Does anyone else have any questions on any of those financial reports? And then, so would someone like to make a motion to approve them? I think that was a simultaneous, potentially a simultaneous Terry and Heather, I'm thinking. Okay, so which one of you would like to make the motion, and which one would like to second?
I'll make the second.
Okay, and Terry, are you comfortable making the motion?
I guess so.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, my report, my last report. Thank you, all of you, for being so supportive and incredible in the work that you do, as I have been the president of the board for the past three years. It's been an honor to, to work with all of you, and congratulations to Carol and Heather and Terry, who will continue the incredible work that we do as trustees. I also wanted to share that you saw that we have an MOU agreement with the Police Department. That document was resolved, that, that whole piece was resolved, and they will be in touch to set up the process of installing the cameras. And then that is it for me. Public comment? Did you receive anything, Ike? Is that a no?
Oh, that's a no, I'm sorry.
Shaking your head, probably? Correspondence and communication. I've had a few different correspondence things happening with library-related things with me. One is some, some lovely news that Julia Morrissey shared that her father, Bruce Hiscoc's, collection of his writings and his art were shared and accepted as a part of the Curlin Collection of Children's Literature at the University of Minnesota, including some photographs of his mural going into the children's department. So that was kind of her to share with us, and I had some correspondence with a patron concerned about a display in the children's services area, which the board was aware of, and I responded to. Ike, would you like, is there anything you want to feature in your director report?
I don't know if there were questions. I mean, we've been, I mean, the big issue has been all about the, the power and what is going on. And we're not the only ones having disasters. You saw it. Northshire is closed down indefinitely. Apparently, there was a water heater, two floors above, it sprung a leak, ruined an apartment below, and then ruined essentially the entire office.
It ruined the second floor, did you say, of Northshire?
Where the children, children's area, and that's the year they have their events. They, but so they reached out, first they reached out to book a meeting room, and since they're not a nonprofit organization, that wasn't possible. But I said, if you're hosting authored events, we would gladly partner to do that, be a co-presenter, and then it becomes a library program as well as a Northshire event, and, and then you can have them in this room because they weren't able to book this, or they were trying to squeeze the events downstairs, but I think this will, this will work, and it just so happened that all of the dates that they wanted us to host are available miraculously, and so it's a, it's a nice partnership.
Yeah, it's very kind, and thank you for.
Ike, yes, congratulations to you. Of the year.
Yes. Yes. Yes, Nancy?
I don't know, maybe this just popped out of my computer. This draft policy on social media?
That's, that's down in our new business section.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Ike and his report? And if not, Jen, is there anything you want to share?
I have nothing to add, except for start getting in shape for next July 4th and join our. And then the strategic plan's there, but we can do that on our whole business.
Okay. I, I participated in a flash mob up here on July 4th in the middle of the parade, so if you start pulling out some dance moves, I'll be there. Dawn? Thank you for our report of, of how many find us just so riveting that they want to watch our, our livestream meetings here.
Apparently, I have nobody watching. Yeah, I just, I thought I could throw that out there.
Yeah, thank you.
Nothing really else, just working on the computers for the refresh, working to get the public access to computers on the first floor and some, some website material that's big on me. Oh, and Brendan's swag that he got, he opened it today. He was saving it for the meeting, but I'm like, I'm like, I don't know, I don't know what's in there. In front of us, I don't know. It turned out it was a nice little canvas bag with some stickers and some bugs, I think, so it was nice to acknowledge Brendan's support of the community.
Yeah, nice.
Which, which reminds me, we did miss something in the correspondence and communication. We got the package today from a person who makes bookmarks from, where is she from? From Texas. It's just a hobby of hers, and she sent them for us to distribute to give to somebody.
Nice. They can be included in all the different packets. Any questions for Dawn?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, were the computers affected by the?
Yeah, I, uh, I just want to ask you, were the computers affected by the brownout?
Um, most of our equipment survived this most recent couple of brownouts miraculously. But yeah, generally, in the past, we've got one or two that we got to work on or replace. It tends to hit the battery backups, which is the failover or the thing that prevents the computers getting hit. Battery backups take the hit, um, and we have to add a bit. But this time, we're good. Like Rick.
And Trevor, is there anything you want to highlight in your report?
It was a fairly standard month. Um, I realized, I, I put this together quickly because I had been away for the better part of two weeks, completely left out. Um, going to the Bram Stoker Awards for Excellence in Horror Literature and presenting at Librarians Day at Stoker Con. So I will include that next month, but also some nice things. I've had some really, some, some meetings with potential authors for Saratoga Book Festival. So I will include that next month, but otherwise, um, it was, it was a good month. June was a good month.
Good. Good. Any questions for, for Trevor from anyone? Okay. Catherine isn't here for youth services report. So Jamie, we are at you.
Sure. Um, I can't remember who it was, if it was either Heather or Jean last time, said that because we had won, um, the program of the year yourselves, that we should display the award. And so it is now on display. So they knew whoever got it said that. Um, and then for our read to recovery, to make sure that it was accessible on the first floor while the elevator was down, and Emily made a cute little display. It's in our Henry Street vestibule. Please check it out. The Narcan has been going fast, so she keeps having to replace that. And a cute picture of the baby. She's growing a little farther.
Yes. Any questions for, um, for Jamie? Okay. And, um, Kelly, did I see you come in?
Kelly's not in.
Okay. Uh, so why don't we, why don't we do her request right now, since I'm in that, that part of the packet? Um, I moved to a point, Jason Carey is a part-time cleaner in operations at eighteen fifty-one an hour effective July 7th, 2025. Would someone like to second that motion?
Right.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Let me get back up. All right. The strategic plan is the first item on our agenda under unfinished business. So you can, as you'll see, if you had a chance to look at it, we made some changes to the introduction and added some methodology. Does anyone have any questions or comments about it? Or are we ready to approve this version of the plan?
Hey, we, pause for a moment. I, I was just interested in asking Rick if you wanted to say anymore about the recent activities.
Actually, I would like to. I want to especially thank Don and the maintenance team, um, Stark Tech, who when we were at the lowest point in this roller coaster, pulled resources, pulled people off other jobs, sent them here when I told them how bad it was. And they really picked us up. There was a, a young tech that came out of, uh, clock graphics, left before clock close. And he really impressed me. We had a special service call in. He goes, well, once we get this computer stuff mostly worked out, he goes, I'll go see what I can do. I was able to cancel a very expensive service call who was saying, well, I'm booked for five or six weeks, uh, I'll have to try to fit you in. So they really did a phenomenal job and they worked a lot of behind-the-scenes hours and from the backside, they really did. And the guys, we had to go out and mechanically check everything physically because you can't see any of it. Our, our, the computer stuff in my office, that was all wiped out. Um, so all of our Jace, which is our interface between our equipment and, you know, the digital building maintenance system, the digital server. We didn't know it was done then, but, uh, Friday made sure it was. Uh, but they did a phenomenal job. There was a lot of hours, a lot of stress. But, um, we don't know the full extent of it yet. I mean, it's substantial. Cost-wise, it's substantial, but we'll see when everything comes in. But Stark Tech did a phenomenal job, really did. Uh, I was very impressed, uh, on the support they gave us because they knew of them. So they did really help.
And they, somebody is filing with National Grid for some reimbursement, or how does that work?
That's, that's the next thing. Um, because as you know, even, even town hall was without power. I mean, so many people have taken so many major hits with the brownouts, power coming on, surge and brownout, whatever. Um, we've notified our insurance company and made a body. Uh, and once I started reading off the list and the times and all that, it's like, oh, because we're going to see if we can get you, uh, an insurance agent there tomorrow, you know, to check some of this stuff out. But yes, we're going to have to look at National Grid too. These are not small numbers we're looking at.
Right.
So thank you. And we got lots of support from admin. So I sent all my guys a personal thank you after the fact. I've already treated them once and I'm treating them to some grilled pork loin tomorrow. My knee was wore out all weekend. I was being, it was a tough couple of days.
Thanks for the paperwork.
Yeah, it does take.
Let's hope that's, let's hope that's the end of it. Let's hope this isn't an ongoing pattern through the summer.
Yeah, Stark Tech says if you got a quarter of a million you don't know what to do with, they can put us on a power filter with backup and we never have to worry about it again.
Okay.
I laugh. I go, where are you going to put it?
I don't know, the roof.
Too hot.
Thanks, thanks. Um, thanks, Terry, since.
Thank you.
We didn't have an official report in there. Um.
No.
So that's.
Comments were. Sorry, my comments weren't meant for public consumption, what I really say.
That's fine, that's fine. And, and Ike was sending us updates as well, so, um, sorry, not a nice welcome back. Sorry about, sorry about the, the arriving to that kind of a mess. Um. Okay, so the, the strategic plan, so does anyone have any, any comments or, um, any feedback, or are we ready to, to approve this version of our next strategic plan?
Did that introduction reflect your?
It has to say thank you both for doing that.
I would move adoption of the strategic plan.
Thank you, Terry. And would someone like to second Terry's motion? Thanks, Carol. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Um, the next item is the MOU, which is there for you to review, with the police department. And, uh, the next item is the Assigned Capital Projects Fund. Um, I sent you something last night from Eric. Eric, do you want to just share what, what I forwarded to everyone in case they didn't have a chance to see my email? Which was your, your response about how the funds could be moved or not moved?
Yeah, it's not, um, the assigned fund is more, uh, a communication of your, your future plans rather than actually committing or restricting anything. So it's, there's no, um, you can just reassign them somewhere else. Uh, the future point is basically just, um, any surplus budget funds to be assigned to a, a future project or a future, a future use that the board determines to use on board. But they're kind of just hanging out there until they're reassigned or used.
So none of the other conditions, the situations where we might not be able to reassign it would apply.
Right there. Yeah, so you essentially would just take that, whatever the eight hundred and eighty-two thousand surplus budget is assigned to a, an assigned fund for future capital projects or whatever the, the future intended uses. And then if the future, it's not needed, it can be signed back to the general body or assigned. Obviously, we're setting an emergency or something, we can redesign it.
So the, so I think you likely all remember that the reason we were talking about doing this was exactly what's happening with the elevator, where the project may take longer than, um, when the funds are arriving. And it then is running over different fiscal years. And so it's, it's a little bit of a paperwork. There's some confusion that can arise from that process. Um, so what we were talking about was a, was creating, um, a way to have the capital funds be in, in an account that could be assigned.
Is this something that, does this require a vote from the board or, um, is it just a matter of?
I believe, I believe it would require a, a vote from the board. And then it would just be, it's basically just that it's then, it, we are not moving the funds out of the current accounts. They are, um, it's really just to notate them on spreadsheets and things, so we have a way to keep track. Am I saying that correctly, Eric?
Yeah, it'd be a separate item on the balance sheet, but yeah, no, no actual opening anywhere. It's all saved.
Yeah, right. But it seems to me because it's a change in our fiscal, um, organizational structure really, that, that we should have a, a vote from the board to do that.
I would move that we create an assigned, um, fund for capital projects. Create a dedicated fund for that.
Thanks, Frank. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I would second that.
Thank you, Jean. All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
I'm a little bit nervous.
Right. Thank you, Eric. So that'll start to appear, um.
Just the current, all of the surplus, current budget surplus.
Can I ask a question about the elevator problem?
Yes.
Um, I'm getting a lot of questions and maybe I haven't paid enough attention about why is it a six-month process?
Yes.
And why is it taking six months to replace an elevator?
Because it's, it's a, it's a big project. So the, the, you've seen the, I've shared the time. So what, what they've got to do is, um, is remove the old elevator. It's a completely different kind of elevator system that's going in as well. So they've got to remove the old elevator, they've got to take out the hydraulics, they've got to the hydraulics and they've got to repair the shaft, a little bit new kind of elevator system.
It will be in the same place?
Going in the same shaft. And it's actually going to take up a little less space. It's not going to have the separate mechanical room for the electrical component. It's all going to be, so it's got to be tilted places. It's just a very big project.
And so.
The removal and the preparation of the shaft, what's new kind of.
How many, how many, like, is there a big workroom doing this or is it?
So they, it's so far, they, it's been about three guys who came down. To, to, so the only thing they've done at this point is just build the enclosures around that. They've got to start to, according to the schedule, um, the people from the elevator manufacturer come in and they're taking a bite. And then once that's gone, they've got to build scaffolding inside the shaft. Just work at the roof, um, penetration where it needs to be done there.
It's kind of reminding me of, you know, the questions about the parking lot, like, like really no one, this is all people want to talk about and they can't ride the elevator at the library. Why is it taking six months to do?
Well, it was meant to close.
It's a big project, I say.
It was meant to close down last.
Right.
Thursday, but it got shut down today early because
Right.
the staff member got stuck and it stopped. It's not working.
And one of the big issues with the elevator, there's a big steel rod that goes down into a casing in the ground.
Oh, my.
That has to be
Right.
taken out, cut off. But then that thing has to be properly sealed environmentally so we don't contaminate any groundwater in the city system. And it is, it is a little complex. And you just got to do it by the numbers.
I, I think, I think also Nancy, what Ike said about the fact that they're not the same, um, kind of elevator systems, it doesn't mean like this one just gets popped out and a new box just gets popped in. That's the issue is that it, then therefore, all of this has to be deconstructed before we can even begin constructing. Um, and they will likely, as people are seeing more of the construction outdoors of, of all the stages and the phases of it, it will probably make more sense. Um, and if not, if not, Ike, it probably couldn't hurt to just kind of laminate that, that schedule.
Put it out there.
Yeah.
Facebook presentation. About the elevator progress.
No, I just.
Maybe give lots of time.
Yeah. The exciting, exciting news. Okay, so in, um, in new business, we just did the appointment of Jason Carey. The other, um, item in new business is a draft policy on social media content and, and comments. This also just came, um, very recently. And so I, uh, are you, are you able to see this? Or are you just seeing me? I'm not sure how Don has it set up.
When he, when he gets there.
The draft policy, is the draft policy on the screen for them or am I just on the screen?
Yeah.
It is, it is.
Okay. Um, so if you didn't have a chance to, um, review it before our meeting, could you just take a quick look at it? This is to, um, basically create some guidelines that our social media, Facebook and, and things like Facebook are still basically library spaces and that they therefore, um, the things that happen in them need to abide by the same types of, uh, rules that our patron code of conduct would expect. So if you don't mind just taking a, a quick look at it.
Where, where is this from?
This, actually, this policy is the, essentially the City of Albany policy with library subsidy.
It's a, it's not great.
It's that, those first couple of lines, right, Frank? I mean, I had to read them several times.
Are we talking about the second paragraph or the?
Well, even just, even the first, even the first. Well, even just, even the first, even the first um, to, you know, even the first sentence. The purpose of the library's social media accounts is to discuss matters of public interested. Interest in and to the library as identified and raised by the library for discussion. It's confusing. It's, it's a little confusing, but, but it's, we understand what they're getting at.
Yeah.
And the real point of the policy is the second two paragraphs.
Those I, I found, uh. So it says that. Content should reflect the mission and values.
Yes.
I, I guess, I did, you know, I. It's not, it doesn't really say, it's, it's just very vague, and then it says. Comments by the public on content created or shared by the library. Are expected to be framed. From vulgar, I mean. That should be probably stronger, like.
If they have to.
Or said more plus, said they are expected to.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm just, this is what I read, I just like, okay, you know, and then. And I, that's a very long sentence. I, I think I would break out the. The vulgar, profane, violent sexist, I think I would just make that up to language or imagery just. Right there, and then I would break it. Before I start talking about infringement on copyright, etc., because I, I think. They're kind of in different categories.
Well, I, I wondered more than after that infringement, unless a purpose can be demonstrated within the context of library operations. What would be an example of that?
Like if the library wanted to advertise that you could buy coffee from the Friends Coffee Shop.
Okay.
That, yeah, that goes to the specific instance you were, and then it talks about, the last paragraph talks about severity of the violation. I mean, a violation, I don't know, I mean, the violation to me sounds like there's, there's a clear violation as opposed to an. Expectation, I expect, I mean, it's just vague to me.
So do you, do you want to spend, do you want to spend some, some time adding um, or changing around the language on it, Frank?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind playing with it a little bit, yeah.
Okay, the part that, that I didn't see here that I, I also would like to see is what, what? This is not gonna live in this format on Facebook. What, has, has anything been added to the about section on, on what the expectations are?
You know, it's going to be the, but the, the, I'm sorry, Katie, catch up, but what the. But the idea would be is that this would live on the library's website, all of our policies too. And there would be a link on our Facebook page. From the Facebook page to the halls.
Okay, that's fine. I think it also should just indicate on the Facebook page that anyone commenting. Um. It, uh, that, that, that it is considered library space and that there is, that there is an expectation that they are. Abiding by the patron code of conduct and that material, that comments will be, will be removed if violated.
Can we, can we say? Because I'm obviously, anybody from anywhere could comment. Can we hold them to the patron code of conduct? They're not patrons.
Because if they're, if they're using library reasons.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I just, I just think that my, my understanding is most people are making some kind of remark like that in the, either the about. Or something which is not taking you someplace else for a whole policy, but just indicating. That the, just a quick statement. Um. So that people know and then can't, can't be really argumentative that their comments are taken down. That, you know, they didn't realize they had to click a link and go read an entire policy. Does that make sense?
I'm just, so you're looking for something that's much shorter than this?
No, I'm looking for a second, a second tiny statement that lives on Facebook. That indicates that um.
That there's a policy.
That, that, that any comments made are expected, that this is library space however it wants to be worded. And that the expectation is um, that they, comments are. In alignment with our patron code of conduct and that comments will be removed. Not even, not even depending on severity of violation, but that, you know, we have the right to remove comments.
So then a link? A link to a more, just more general, this policy then?
Then, then, then it will also have a link to the whole policy, but that you don't have to go to the whole policy to find out. To, to note that I, I am expected to.
That is for mammy.
Yeah. Is that okay? Is that okay, Ike, to, to draft a quick something like that?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and when we tighten this up to, so that it says what we wanted to say. We probably should fold it. We already have the social media policy, which, which. Applies mainly to us.
Right.
That's the, to the, it's about the, the way the library is going to use social media posts. What to do, what's dash to do and not do, and both of these are roads out of. Disuse of the. Uh, so, but maybe if there's more of a policy, it should reform right into the social media policy. This is the staff use, this is the public.
Yeah, that, that would be great. That would be great.
Do we know how other libraries have, what they have? Like, this is from the government, City of Albany. Um, and so, but do we have any, other libraries must encounter this too? Like, this is our social media policy, but then if you're gonna. Express yourself on. Social media about the library, you can't on our site. Like, our other libraries have a policy.
Yeah, I, I think that you, that's, that was our, when we were looking around, yes, I mean, I think that, you know. Um, especially in, with the nature of what's just happening culturally and socially right now, most. Most people are, are setting up um. Those policies. Okay, so maybe, maybe Frank, before the next meeting, you could um, just send around a draft. And Ike, you could um. Include the current policy with it, and then in September, they could be approved as one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to work with Ike on this and, and then maybe we can hope this on together.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay, great. Um. All right, I would uh, like to adjourn our regular meeting. Um, before any of you uh, stand up, we are going to adjourn into. Two different executive sessions, and so the first, I would like all of the department heads. And the board to remain. Um. So who else is left? So I guess Tanya, you don't have to stay and you might be the only one. And, but I'd, I would like the live stream recording and things to stop. Dawn. Oh, and Eric too. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Tanya.
Thank you, actually.